The meeting is...
Oh.
A miss. I mean, on. What am I meaning? You didn't do the minutes the last meeting.
I did not.
Okay. We'll forgive you. You had something to do with your place of employment, did you? Mayor, do you have anything besides the agenda?
No, I do not.
Do you have any public here? No. Okay. Let's talk the budget and let's talk when we can do this. What do you have, Mayor? I had, I might have said the 7th to you. I can't do the 7th. But let me know what dates you want to do what. Do you know yet?
I do. I was just pulling him up.
So you guys got your calendars ready?
Working on it, yes.
Can't put it on my computer.
I can do that, too. I'm getting it.
Okay.
I do want to include revenue in these discussions. And typically, we don't approve revenue, but I always like to start with it to see what's the underlying assumptions of revenue as we go through the budget so.
So I was going to s- well, we actually put...
How many meetings?
One, two, three, four, five.
Five meetings?
Yeah. And so we have general government and CPA on May 7th. This is just what I'm suggesting.
I can't do the 7th, but let's just do the, let's just do the different ones. Okay.
The Public Works, Enterprise, Culture and Recreation.
On, that's another one?
On the 8th. On the 9th, Public Safety and Human Services. On the 14th, Education, and maybe have the Library come then. And then we're going to do May 21st, Unclassified Debt, Interest, Revenue Review.
Revenue and what?
The Revenue Review, like just with what you just spoke about. So Unclassified, like the insurances, then debt and interest, and then Revenue Review.
I could say this, given my experience.
Yeah.
You don't need five meetings. I'd like to move number one.
I'm just at...
I'd like to move, I can't do the 7th. I misspoke when I talked to you.
Okay.
I'm traveling back from Pennsylvania.
Okay.
At least as of today.
All right.
So why don't we just move that to five? Because I think we can do all of that. General Government, CPA, Classified and Revenue.
Okay. Yeah. Sure.
So that would mean Public Works is our first one, and that's the 8th?
Yes.
Public Works, Enterprise...
Culture and Recreation.
Culture and Recreation?
Yeah.
Are you guys okay with the 8th? That's a typical.
It's a typical at times, so that's, that's great. Public Works, what else could we use there?
Enterprise, Culture, Recreation. Now, Joe, I've mentioned this in the agenda. I'm not doing a charter review on the 9th. I'm only going to do one in May. So the 9th is when we would be doing, gentlemen, Public Safety, Human Services. And what else did you say on the 9th?
Public Safety and Human Services. We just think those are big departments.
Okay.
So just two coming in.
That's on the 9th? Okay.
Yeah.
Education, Library on the, which day? 14th?
Yeah.
You guys have any other subcommittee meetings? That's a Tuesday. And the 21st?
I think the 14th. Okay, what were the topics, sorry?
Why, why not the 22nd for the last one? Only because that's a typical finance.
I'm not here.
Is it the 14th?
I mean, I have...
Educational, Library.
Educational.
You're not here.
I'm not here on the 22nd.
All right, we'll make it the 21st. We don't, and we won't have a meeting on the 22nd unless there's something that we can't handle. Like, if we have appropriations and things to deal with, if they're not controversial, I'll try to get them done during these meetings. I'd rather not have more meetings. What problem with the 21st was classified?
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm sorry. The 20th through the 24th, I'm out of town. On my conferences. I don't know how I just, I guess I do that on the 22nd.
Well, I could do the 16th. It just means I have a long night. I can do the 16th, 5 to 7, 6:30.
Okay.
CPA.
Sure.
Not good for you? Okay, we can't do that one. Well, the council meeting is June 5th. That's when we'll set the public hearings.
Yeah.
We can meet the 28th to 29th. 29th is a typical day. Do you want to do that for the last one?
Um...
Unless we can find another date in between.
Yeah, I mean, the 29th is fine.
You want to do the Monday, the 20th? How's that for a year?
I'm not here.
Oh, that's right. You're not here the whole week.
20 through 24.
Oh, yeah.
So 29th?
You said 20 through 24, I think.
Yeah.
29th will be the last one.
29th.
So if we need to... Revenue, Classified, Debt and Interest, General Government. Now, on the 22nd, if there's fini- we might have a meeting, but it would be Melissa with anything involving appropriations or whatever else is on the general. So just to review, the 8th, Public Works, Enterprise, Culture, Recreation; the 9th, Public Safety, Human Services; the 14th, Education and Library; and the 29th, Classified Revenue Review and General Government. Okay, everybody? Moving on. Workman's compensation. I assume you know the details of this one. Looks obvious that we need to pay additional workman's comp. In that... Is that just an underestimated?
It's underestimated in claims, yeah.
You don't know what the claims will be? That's why you have it.
Yeah, because you don't know exactly what the claims are, how, upon the audit, and it would be underestimated.
When you estimate at the beginning of the year for the budget.
How often is there an audit? Is it every year? What do they, what do they do? I'm not, I don't recall seeing that before.
Um, I think everybody and anybody who pays in workers' comp, I mean, I remember in the private sector, you come in, they'll pick, you know, they'll, they'll pick employee files. They'll want to see how you balance the claims, the phishing filing of claims or paperwork, responses, follow-up cleared for duties, you know. John slips while he's picking up some pool equipment or whatnot, and, you know, his ankle is hurt. And then, yes, he went to go see workers' comp and workers' connection. Was he cleared when he came back? You know, you have that documentation on file.
It's a personnel office.
Yeah, personnel, yeah.
So somebody comes in, they find out. So what, what makes the change on the, on the numbers here?
Just on the, the different claims.
So this is, this is a cumulative amount of claims? So this is, everything they pulled for, for audit, of those, the bottom line changed by this amount?
And they adjust the premium, yeah.
It's not an overage or an underage on the budget?
Well, it's an, it's an underage of us...
This is a premium payment, correct?
Yeah, like this is, we've underestimated it and it was... I know my friend talking about the comp. And the worker comp and the expense.
So this is, we're underpaying the premium. We have to pay more premium based on the audit.
We estimate, we estimate what the wages will be, so then we set the rates. And then when it goes over, they come back and ask us what happened.
Estimated wages versus actual. Okay? Any other questions, gentlemen? Move we accept?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is a public hearing for next week, I think. Next is free cash to cover snow and ice. Bill, I don't know if you know this, but that's the only account that we're allowed to run a deficit in. The DOR allows that. But we haven't had to do a deficit. Deficit spending, meaning we actually paid for last year's snow in next year's budget. In the past, that's happened. But since we've been able to do this with free cash, we don't have to do that. We're paying it on a free cash. So this is typical. Anything you want to add, Mayor? $175,000 to cover snow and ice. We budget that. We're, we're supposed to maintain the budget, as I recall, the same every year. Otherwise, you have to budget it.
Exactly.
If you budgeted it higher to cover it, you'd have to budget it the next year. Which is why they budget it lower. Because if it doesn't snow, that money becomes free cash and they can't budget it for something else. You know what I mean? So it's better to underbudget it than overbudget it. Anything to be moved?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, CPA. I am the Chair of the CPA Committee, so we'll go to the pickleball courts first. We approved this design. Councilor McCoy is our, President McCoy is our big aficionado on pickleball. And there's pickleball courts in a lot of communities. This money would be for the design of the courts. And I'll turn it over to John as to where. CPA approved this unanimously. It's a typical recreation and it adds more recreation. And as Joe was explaining before the meeting, there's a range of people that have become loving of playing this sport. From eight-year-olds to seniors. So it's a good addition to our facilities to have, in my opinion. Either of you want to add anything?
Yeah, so this is just for the design and cost estimates.
You might want to tell them where it is, too.
So yeah, it'll be down in the soccer complex area to the right. It's a, one of the last pieces of cleared land in the park that has nothing on it, to tell you the truth. So it's an area where it's not utilized for anything but storing wood and other things that aren't of any concern.
We don't have to cut the tree?
We don't have to cut anything down. It's already ready to go. This is for design and costs. We want, I've been to several in Western Mass and talked to other recreation directors and tried, quite honest, the costs are all over the map. You know, I talked to some and they're doing it for this, and others are doing it for one and a half times the cost. So getting the design and cost estimates pretty close are what we wanted to do here than to try to come with a number that might not, with prevailing wage, it might not even be close. So that's why we went with doing that, getting professionals involved and helping us with that process, so.
And what was the, your thinking of the total cost eventually?
Probably around 80 is what I get the general sense for the two courts. But it could be less. I always like to estimate high, so it's not sticker shock later on, so.
And CPA won't end up paying the whole thing?
No.
It'll be probably funded with some...
Yeah, so there's going to be, you know, as, as our practice is at the park is to try to get any type of funding, whether it's donation grants, our own resources that we provide, whether it's monetary or, you know, in kind with labor, which we've, we've done quite a bit of. If we can do the work, as much work we can get done in-house to save costs, we do. And DPW's been good through the years to help us out as well if we need anything like that done, so.
Okay. Joe, you want to add anything?
Yeah, no, I mean, I know it's somewhat of a new activity in this area, but as John knows very well, it's huge stone south. It's, it's very popular with the 55-plus, although it can be pit, as I said earlier, it can be played by any age and a really good workout. So I would sort of promote something that I think would just be strictly for one age group, a population in our city. Although, that being said, I do feel that our taxpayers who are in that 50, 55-plus range, who have probably been paying probably most of the CPA taxes for a long time, it would be nice to give something to them. And we have, every single, every single gymnasium that we have, we're going to have less, it's full of youth basketball. You know, and so we have the trail, which is great, all ages. But I think it's a, it'd be a great thing, opportunity for, for fitness and recreation for all ages in East Hampton. But particularly in, you know, of the 55-plus age, it can be... At the, at the full City Council meeting, I show some videos to show it being played at different levels, give people an idea. But it's extremely popular. I say, I'm still starting from when I was talking to John about it. I said, "Do you know about people?" "Oh, yeah, yeah, my parents play it." Okay, great.
That helped, huh? It took a good job to do it.
But anyway, I think it's really, it's really, it's really, and it's grown. There's, there's tournament, there's actually professional tournaments in it now nationwide. You know, obviously we're not competing with tennis yet, but, you know, $50,000 prize monies, total purse. But it's not, it's not like some kind of flash in the pan kind of game that we're going to invest and then it's going to be like, no one's going to play it. And this is, as, as started in the 70s, there's estimated about 3 million people in the United States already play it. I think it would be a terrific investment for the city. And a lot of communities around us have either temporary courts they're playing with. Westfield is working on putting in some permanent courts. Agwam already has four that can go down Saturdays and they're mob. It's a lot of waiting to get them in. I think it would be, and I'm actually, you know, we're trying to get some seed money to match, not to match, but to put towards the CPA. You know, we're not like football or soccer, where we have hundreds and hundreds of families that have kids playing it. But I have been talking to Sporting Goods as a, as a nationwide sponsor of the sport. So I have applications out for sport from them. And of course, are always go-to great people in East Hampton. Big E's, Florence Savings Bank, East Hampton Savings Bank, I've been talking to. So, and as well as private donations from people who play it in the city who are trying to, you know, come up.
To help manage the CPA.
Show an effort and interest.
Questions, Councilor?
I have a couple of questions. Are there other courts in the area that are...
Permanent courts is four in Agwam.
Four in Agwam.
Belcher Town's completing their construction this spring, summer.
How many courts?
I think there are three over there. Greenfield has some.
We're building four, right?
Two.
Two.
Not two to start. If we ever, the demand warrants it and, you know, there's space available to add, to add more, but two's, two's, it was a good start.
In terms of usage, how long is it getting, I mean, how many? I'm just trying to imagine usage. How long is a game? 15 minutes, 10 minutes, a half an hour?
We usually play...
How many people are going to use this? I mean, in an average day?
Oh, the other, other thing to the, I think, you know, any, any kind of activity you have, it, it's nice if you have the ground to help promote the community. And she was here for the CPA meeting, but in, a friend of mine from Florence is one of the top-ranked national players in the country in 50-plus women. And she is going to, she is dedicated to giving free clinics, introductory clinics, DC and the residents to understand the game, to get it going, and things like that. So we also have, we have a support system to promote it in, in the, in the community as well. Actually, that's a pretty good question, I think I forgot.
How long?
How long is a game?
Oh, yeah, right, so.
10 minutes or half an hour?
No, it takes probably an hour and a half. Typically, you play two games of 11, win by two, two out of three games. But it's kind of like volleyball scoring in that you have to be serving to win a point. So, you know, if you're serving and you got a point, then you win it. But if you lose it, then it goes to the other side. And so, you know, you, you can play points back and forth with no one getting a point. Like, for instance, you're serving, you lose a point, it goes to the other side.
So it could be a...
So it could go longer.
Hour and a half?
Yeah. Yeah, I would say so.
Fourth, a set of three?
Right, I mean, again, that's like if you were, you could play, obviously you can play as long or as little as you want. But if you were going to a tournament, typically you'd play the first one to 11, two out of three games.
I was just wondering, you know, how many courts, how many people, what kind of usage?
Right. I mean, that's just today. And they, in Agwam, as I said, there are a lot, you know, typically...
Well, it's because they're one of the few courts, they're all going down there. Once we get them.
Right.
I don't think we'll have a problem getting people to play.
No, as, as, the big thing is getting people to know about it. You know, it's, it's still somewhat new to people up here. It's huge in other parts of the country and really huge where you wouldn't. And there's a tournament starting this weekend that this place in Florida has 50 outdoor courts. And they're all be full for this tournament. I mean, it's huge. Very, very popular. So this isn't just a flash in the pan. And they, you know, and so, and the space is so much smaller that typically, like, a lot of indoor tennis clubs right now, because tennis seems to be becoming a little less popular and maybe as the population ages, you can fit a pickleball court on each half of a tennis court. So now, Hampshire, the tennis club in, across the river at Hampshire College, certain nights they have pickleball. When they tape the lines over the tennis court, they have a temporary net and they play. And so tennis clubs are even looking at a place to generate income because, you know, for filling gaps where tennis isn't as popular.
Are there any of the private schools around here there, or is this just for older, older folks?
Well, East Hampton High School, actually, they, they, in the wintertime, they had it as part of their physical education program. So Brian Miller, you know, did a class of a month-long on pickleball and they played inside. So, so, you know, the youth, you know, we would have our camp non-op program, kids play pickleball, and once it's there, too, it would be incorporated to, to have them play.
I just didn't know if Williston had, had courts.
I don't think so, no.
And if they did...
Well, Williston doesn't have anything, as far as I know.
Right. Actually, and Brian has, has, the other thing is, we have a group that meets Monday and Wednesday nights at Tri-Cowley School. And we use a gymnasium and we probably have probably 30 or 40 people who are signed up. And they're not always there every night, but probably, you know, 15 or 20 people are there every night. There are two courts, so you can fit about eight people. And then you can't keep waiting. But there's already, East Hampton Winter League that goes Monday and Wednesday nights at Tri-Cowley School.
Sounds good to me. I love it.
$80,000 was the total development cost, you think, for both courts, not one court?
That'd be for both, yeah. And that's...
Sorry, man, I asked you a lot of questions about this because...
Yeah.
I'm looking at, what is the dollar amount going to be for the, for the Town Hall?
That's $6 million, though.
And how much would CPA be?
Yeah, it really depends on how much we bond, which is why I want the, hopefully, the increase.
Bond as little as possible. And we need to keep saving, I think, for that. So I'm going to be looking extra hard at every...
Well, but my, my problem that's...
That comes along.
I don't disagree with that. But we cannot deny the community the other things that the CPA pays. And I've made that point quite clear to the membership, and I made it the other night at the council meeting. That's why I want this new increase, I hope passes the budget. Hear anything about that, by the way?
Uh, yes. Do you want me to...
Could I do this?
It sounded negative. I want to know.
Uh, yes. There is somewhat of already a compromise or an understanding forming, and that'll be rolled out. I actually...
Rolled out?
Yeah, rolled out in Boston on May 1st. I'm supposed to go speak to that.
You mean it's going to, going to be part of the budget?
That is the idea.
Okay. The reason I'm saying that is that'll bring a few hundred thousand dollars more into our budget every year. So we have to bond. That helps because then we have money coming in to cover other projects like these that come through. So the philosophy of the CPA committee is to, yes, we really want this to happen, the Town Hall, but we do not want to do it in such a way that we have to deny other people. We're hoping we can put a lot of cash against the bond, so that we're... Almost a million dollars by the time we do it. Cash, we're putting stuff aside, that's what I mentioned to you, Mark. And then the, the rest would be bonded, which would be a lot less per year that we'd have to pay.
So I think we have about a million dollars, million one, million two in CPA, right?
No, more than that. I don't have it on me here, but a million five or something. So it's a lot. But again, we have projects. We're going to talk about the next project in a minute that, that costs a lot of money. I can't, I, I am a big proponent for the Town Hall project. However, I'm also realizing that there's a lot of other things that happen in this community. Open space, affordable housing, we need to pay for those things. And we can't deny those because we're budgeting so much for the Town Hall. And City Space knows this. They know they have to come up with matching money. We do three. They got to find three right now. So we don't know where that's going to go. It's still early in the financing. Their search for funds is early. That's my feeling on that. Bill, do you have anything?
On pickleball?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, just the only thing, currently there's, it says temporary location. Are we using the old tennis courts and doing it, like you said, with it's a half-court?
It's an old basketball, well, it's not an old basketball, but it's the, it's the Millside Park Basketball Court, which is a half-court situation.
Oh, down, down here. There's nothing up here?
There's nothing in the park.
As a temporary?
We have, the, the courts we have are clay courts.
Okay. It can be used for pickleball? Okay. So I, I didn't know where there was temporary ones existing, so I, that was a question there. And then, so this fee or proposal or whatever is going to cost $9,000. We're asking for $6,000 from CPA. The other $3,000 is that come from Park and Rec? Park and Rec, yeah, okay.
And again, it's the design.
No, I understand. It's just the design plans and bids and all that. That's all I had.
So could I move this forward? Gentlemen, you ready?
I'll second.
Move that re-proving? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the, oh, John explained. We did approve this, $30,000. This Stone House building has been around for years. It is a historic building. But it's a bathroom, and it will cost quite a bit of money to renovate. At one point, John did an estimate, correct me if I'm wrong, but that wasn't able to get a grant to help pay for it because it wasn't a design. It was just an estimate of what it would cost. He, like anything we do with CPA, and when we did the facade on the Old Town Hall, we had to recently pay for that design from an architect. And then they're going to go out and get grants, once they get that. This, again, is money to get the design done. We're looking at $400,000. Am I correct? As a possible cost for the whole thing. And CPA Committee was quite clear that they would approve this, and they did so unanimously, but that they would expect a great deal of that money to be in the form of grants. Not, certainly not all CPA money. The building is historic and it will provide facility for that corner of Daily Field. And there's a lot of games played there, softball, baseball. So CPA Committee was okay with spending the money for the design. Because the design doesn't go away. If it takes a while to get the grant money, you know, a couple of years, the design is still good. And John needed it. So John, why don't you go ahead and defend this?
So we've, uh, we've gone to the state on two different levels for funding for the Stone House building bathrooms. We went for a park grant. It tried to get $250,000 towards that. We did not, did not happen, did not go through. And then we went for an ADA grant through the state because it would become handicap accessible.
That's where a lot of the money's coming.
Yeah.
It's going to have to go into it.
So, and exactly. So we went that route and it didn't get accepted on that as well. And Jeff would tell you from planning that when you put your own little notes in there, what you think it's going to cost, the state does not push it at the top of the pile. You know, they want designs, they want accurate cost numbers, they want construction docs, they want, you know, the full commitment. So going this route of getting, um, an actual cost in design and construction docs, to know where we're at and what it's gonna cost, who knows, we go through this process and they come back and say, you know, we could probably get it done for two hundred and twenty thousand. We were gonna take, you know, one less bathroom out, you know, toilet, whatever, sink, wind sink, whatever it is, um.
At least you'll know what those costs are.
At least we know what those costs are. Or they'll come back and say, you know, it's six hundred thousand dollars. And then we say, well, looks like it's porta potties in the corner for the next thirty years.
That's what we have now, by the way.
We have, we have a porta potty, um, that, that gets put in place. Today would be a good example of the amount of people, um, that are scrambling for bathrooms when there's a game between two teams with, you know, fifty fans there. And they go over to that building and it's not open. And there's no porta potty there yet because it doesn't get installed until May first. So, um, if you're at the park every day and you see the amount of traffic, uh, that's on Daley Field, that's through the park, whether it's walking, um, or by the playgrounds that, that get used. Not having a bathroom within eye shot or walking distance, um, doesn't present well for a public park, in my opinion. So, this has been a project that we've been actively looking for to get done. The commission's very much behind it. This building is, uh, was built in nineteen thirty-seven. According to the assessor's office in the historical commission, in nineteen ninety-four, I believe is the date, it was described in poor condition. We are in two thousand nineteen, that's twenty-five years later. We ran that building for another twenty-two years of bathrooms and did what we could, but it is, internally, um, it's, it's exhausted, exhausted, it's over. Externally, it's in great shape.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that, structurally.
Structurally, it's, it's sound.
It's a, it's a well-built building.
Well-built building.
Typical of buildings built in that era, very strong.
Very strong, slate roof was, uh, was redone by a local resident on his own time, just volunteering. An hour here, hour there, over a tire here, you know, redid the whole roof. So, it's needed, and this would give us at least the foundation to move forward towards grants. Once again, we don't come looking for every dollar from CPA. We wanna come with a plan to offset any cost potential on the city. And this would, this would be the avenue to go for that.
The total cost of this is forty, they're giving.
Forty, and we, and we're in for ten on that, to make sure we, uh, we show the commitment that we, that we're.
And these drawings are not conceptual, these are actual architectural drawings and construction documents.
Construction documents, exactly.
So if you had the funding, you could immediately go up to bid.
Yes, that is correct.
JP, Bill?
What size is the building? Order of dimensions?
I don't have it all. Me right here.
I'm gonna guess forty by twenty.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that'd be, that's a good guess, I'd say twenty by forty.
These bathrooms are in there currently?
Um, so you got the men's and women's on both sides, um, I think it's two on each. There's storage up above, that was the old, for those historians in town, that was the old Park and Rec office, um, up on the second floor there. Howard Stone's office back in the fifties.
Boy, if they move you back there, that's more motivation to fix this.
Yeah. I'm not going back there, it's haunted.
Anything, in terms of, before I can vote on this, I, I would recommend, I, I would like to take a look at it.
It's been there since nineteen thirty-seven, JP, you haven't seen it?
It's been many years since I've been.
Hasn't changed.
I think I, last time I was in there, I was, I was very young, it was not something that I've been in recently so far. I'm, I'm, I, I know I need to see its condition, uh, just to kinda get a sense of what it kinda.
I'd be more than happy for it.
Yeah, so I'd be happy to go.
I, I don't see why, certainly that's okay, but I don't wanna hold this up for that.
Well.
I don't realize, I don't really.
I guess, I guess I'm looking at a cost here for bathroom, I mean, as much, listen, I, I agree, we need, we need bathrooms. But forty thousand dollars to do a study on bathrooms.
It's not, it's not a study, it's instruction documents.
It's, it's, it's construction documents, it's a study about the documentation of what we need to make it right.
No, it's architectural drawings, it's, it's an architect, I mean, that's what I just said, it's not conceptual study.
I understand, it, it is, it is a detailed cost analysis of a development of, of the project.
It's instruction documents, right?
Yeah. Construction documents.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a study, there's a, there's a big difference between them.
Well.
Too much money, right?
For me, it's, it's, it's just seems like a huge amount of money to spend. And then, when you're saying this could cost four hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money.
CPA questioned that too, but rebuilding it would cost a lot more than four hundred thousand.
Definitely. And, um, we can go back three years where the CPA approved a hundred and thirty-eight thousand towards the project.
Towards?
This project, when we were looking at potential funding, when we were in the state loop. And we had to rescind that request when the grant didn't go through. So we're actually, instead of going back three years of approved at that amount, we are coming back with a much less number to get not, uh, something that will help us get dollars down the line. So, you're looking at potential four hundred thousand, you're thinking that's all CPA. This is gonna be a tool to make sure it's not all CPA.
I, I understand. When I look at, I mean, it's all public dollars, it's all public money, but in the end, I look at what you can buy for forty thousand dollars. We're talking now, we have a, a little, like, what, do you see the Sandy Can porta potty?
Yeah, one, one, yeah, it's a pinata too, occasionally, it gets tipped over quite a bit.
One, one unit, one, one, one.
And we put, we put next to the stone building.
The CPA felt this is a public health issue.
Yeah, it's a public health. If you guys could just look at this, Rick, if anybody would like to see, I wanted to show you something I found on the internet that I thought was quite interesting. Looks, I'm not sure we.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's a video, so I was.
I've seen, I've seen the portable restroom trailer, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're, essentially what it is, is a trailer. It has, uh.
Bathroom on the trailer.
Bathroom's on the trailer. So.
Festivals or what?
Yeah, so, yeah, exactly, festivals have it, concerts, they bring them in.
Joe? Yeah, I've been north. All of it, I was gonna, I was hoping we all could, uh, can you come over here? Oh, okay.
I know what they are, I mean, I've seen them, I can't get in them.
This is all ADA.
Well, that means we buy.
All, all ADA, ADA restrooms. And there are three restrooms in this, this, this particular trailer. Including one ADA handicap accessible restroom. The total cost of everything, soup to nuts, is thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars. Now maybe you have to hook it into the sewer line there, or hook up water lines and electricity. But when I, you, when you're thinking of four hundred thousand dollars, I take questions, that's why I would like to go and look at exactly what we have there, before I'm comfortable voting.
Okay, Bill, do you have any questions?
Has there been any research and, and I don't, or thoughts going into a brand-new facility in a different corner of it and what the cost is? So, my, my assumption is, is part of the four hundred thousand dollars is part of the historic preservation of the building and maintaining its integrity.
This is why I don't like handing out numbers when I'm not informed and we're throwing around four hundred thousand like it's, like it's accurate and.
I understand.
It's a, it's a high number to make sure.
And you said that, you said that.
So, I mean, I could, I could've came in and said it could be a hundred and fifty thousand and, and misrepresented what, what it could potentially be.
Sure.
So, um, so, I'm sorry I interrupted, but that's, I think that's, we keep throwing that number around, it's not, it's not a number that should've been thrown around because we're not sure where it is.
So even if it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's still a lot of money. And, you know, that same conversation, if it, if it's that, what, you know, what's the cost of, of a different facility or a new facility within, uh, you know, maybe over by the basketball courts or something like that, you know, has, has anything else been looked at as, as another alternative?
Yeah, so we looked at, you know, based off of, like, when we built, um, bathroom two in the park, um, which is going on, whatever, twenty, twenty.
Down by the pavilion, yeah.
Yeah, that was three hundred thousand and change.
And that's a nice bathroom.
It's a nice bathroom and that's, you know, twenty years, twenty years later, so you look at prevailing wage and costs now, so, um, we wouldn't be at it.
No, so it'd be real, stick around four hundred thousand, that, that's, that's kinda what I was alluding to and what I was looking at. You know, I, I totally get the forty thousand dollars and, um, you know, a porta potty is about two hundred and fifty dollars a month, on average.
Exactly.
You know, so I mean, we're wasting money just on a porta potty for that location too. You know, and, and I just did a yearly average, it's about three, thirty, four hundred dollars, just to a porta potty. You know, and we could be reinvesting that, and you said it's been shut down for three years?
At least, yeah.
So, that's almost twelve thousand dollars the city's paid for a porta potty, so I mean.
And when it's built, it'll last twenty years, at least before we have to do much maintenance.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, the ones in the park, that you haven't had, have you had a lot of vandalism or issues that you'd have to say?
No, I mean, like, it's, it's, you know, just average stuff that happens in the wintertime. We, we opened a bathroom two this past week and, you know, there was a crack in a pipe behind the wall, but George, you know, goes in, takes it out, fixes it. You know, just, it's, it's outdoor plumbing in a, in a setting, in a park, you know, so there's gonna be, there's gonna be issues that happen, but that's just general wear and tear. You know, bathroom three and one have been there for, forever, um, and they, you know, they're still holding up strong, you know. They're open-air windows and, you know, it's not.
CPA committee had all these reservations, similar to yours, but they felt that the historic nature, public health issue, it's worth at least finding out what it's gonna cost to renovate it. So that's what we're talking about, we're not moving forward from there. And these documents are not, again, conceptual, they are the real documents, so if it takes a couple of years for them to get matching funds, we're not losing documents.
They don't retire.
Mayor wants it.
Yeah. With other, even looking at other alternatives or a new bathroom building or whatnot, there'd still be a design fee. And I also, just with experience with, um, Old Town Hall as well as Win Ferry, I would assume that the project, um, to just leave a, a historical building there as an open liability and not look at how to, to rehab is, is a liability. But as well, um, doing anything with that going forward, it's, it's historic, we need to know, we wanna preserve that. I mean, that's a part of CPA, as well as it is a part of something that's a functional facility for the city. I mean, the aesthetics of that building, it's, it's iconic. And for it to be something other than a museum, um, and something functioning, I think is quite unique to East Hampton. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I'd love to see what the design would look like and what the investment is on a whole bunch of stuff. I also, you know, it hits a couple of buckets for us that we really struggled. We've struggled getting historic preservation grant money and we've struggled getting ADA grant money. We were, you know, there was an issue with this application that we weren't funded, we just put in for, um, thirty thousand dollars to just upgrade our ADA planning and, um, got not one penny for that. I, I think that the investment by CPA in this design that could make something, um, you know, historically usually significant as well as accessible to all members of the community is a, certainly a detailed project and there's some sticker shock there, but, um, it preserves something that is, maybe will show us a way to preserve something that's uniquely East Hampton in the park.
So John, one thing you can do to help all the councils, not just JPs, get some photographs for the new, for, this is up for all the caring.
Yeah, I have all the photographs.
If you could just digitize them and send them to the council.
I have them all digitized, yeah, because that was part of the first CPA grant three years ago, has all the videos, all the photos.
Update those and send them over.
The bachelor books, and it's, it looks worse now, so I probably should take my picture now.
Anyway, I, I wanna move that we accept this, if you don't wanna vote yes or no, that's fine, but I do wanna vote yes to accept this 'cause as a CPA chairman, I have to move it forward. Bill, you want a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Okay.
We have a chance to go and take a look.
Do you?
Yeah, well, you should.
Going back to the park in, huh, fifteen minutes?
No, we have another issue, unfortunately, I'll take a little longer.
Give you the grand tour.
Thank you, John, again, this is a public hearing, so send those pictures as much as you can.
Yeah, I'll go back to my office.
Do any detail you can give us?
You got it.
Okay. Now to the pay plan, is that the last, we don't have anything else, right? I wanna make sure this is the last one, pretty sure. You guys have the agenda? I just have, that's the only old business, right?
Snowy, six thousand, three, three thousand.
All right. All right, so, we have, Jane has invited, uh, Mary, is it?
Yes.
From the Collins Center.
I'll introduce myself. I said hello to you in the hallway.
Yes, you did, hi.
I'm Mary, I'm Patty, so nice to meet you.
I think I met you with the charter.
Yes, you did, yes. No, I wasn't here for the charter.
I must've been a different Mary.
It was Marilyn, Tanya.
Marilyn!
Yes, it was Marilyn, Tanya.
Mary, you have to have an M for your first name.
We do.
To belong to the charter, the Collins Center. So I appreciate you coming.
I'm happy to be here.
We've already reviewed this a couple of times, I'm gonna read off some statements, Jane, and even Mary, if there's anything in here that I have. These are things I read before, uh, that I'll include in the report. These are statements that basically tell us all what has been on the record stated by, you weren't here the last time, by Jane. No employee will suffer any loss of salary with the adoption of this pay plan. In other words, this pay plan does not reduce anybody's current pay. That's accurate. Right, Jade?
No one will lose.
No one's job description will change, adding new responsibilities to their work, job descriptions will change to match what employees already do.
So there may be duties added, but to reflect what they are doing, not.
What they are doing.
Correct.
It's not that they're gonna have new work to do that they weren't doing before.
No, it's just that the paper will reflect what they are actually doing, what that position is actually doing.
The pay plan was developed by the Collins Center through a thorough study of existing positions, salaries and pay scales compared to other communities. And I will ask you to, Mary, to go into detail. The pay plan proposed is a plan dealing with positions that exist and not current employees in those positions. It's about the position, and it's important to separate that out, in my mind it was, um, and how it relates to other studies. Annual step increases will continue so that previously maxed-out employees will again be given step increases on the anniversary of their employment. It's also established that this is the policy of the current administration, Mayor, but is not mandated by the charter or state law. Under Mayor Tosnick, step increases were not given every year. So you're currently planning on giving step increases, or did this year? Is that a? Stipends for extra work for some employees, notably the city clerk, the auditor and finance director, will not be changed, even though the Collins report suggested a different salary structure. That's a fair statement, I made that the last time. Lastly, what I wanna say before I open it up to Mary and then you guys ask questions. What I like about this review is it's independent. The last time we did this, we did it in-house, and because we did it in-house, there could always be questions of whether or not there was favoritism towards some employees or there was politicizing of the pay plan. By having an independent study done, it's worth it because that study takes a lot of data in and makes a decision. And it's done differently than, I mean, it's done separate from the government, some separate from the administration. It may not please everybody, but in my mind, that's safer and more productive and more efficient than if we did it in-house. And I'm sure we could do it in-house, if we had the kind of time, we don't have the personnel for that. Now I wanna thank you, I know you're shorthanded, you, Jane, in your office, but you did manage to give us some data and I appreciate, Mary, that you sent us along the, uh, study that you used for Cities and Towns, I appreciate that. And Jane did at least one-year study of the actual cost of this that JP requested. And she did one year because the following year will be very similar and it takes a long time to develop this. So I, I said one year is enough for now because at least we know. This is like seventy-three thousand, if I'm reading this correctly, look at the bottom line, increase in budget, once it's approved. And it, is it in your budget right now, Mayor, I didn't study it? You're gonna do a supplemental, you'll do a supplemental if this is approved?
I haven't, right, we're anticipating, we may plan to work, but it's not in the budget that I submitted.
Okay, so, she feels, because there's also coal is involved, and then you have to compound, it's like a two-and-a-half percent increase stepwise, right? And then you have to do that based on the salary that's approved from the previous year, there's a lot of math involved in this.
Well, it's part of it is also because everybody gets their steps at different times.
Right.
So, it's not like I can just say, okay, this year they'll go to this step and give them a whole year's worth of that new salary. Some of them might have one month at the new, some might have one month at the old.
Fiscal year-wise?
Correct, so, it, I have to do each person individually, month by month.
Okay, but this at least gives us a sense if, that it could be as high as seventy-three again, the following year. the following year. Okay. So my biggest question is, one of the questions that's been brought up a lot is how the job descriptions, how you used your analy- analysis of the different cities and towns and all of the different, Mary, all of the different things that went into your decision on where a particular job should be placed in the pay plan. It wasn't just, you know, an analysis of just the cities and towns because different jobs, the apples and oranges, different jobs and different requirements. So would you explain that?
Sure.
Because I think the councilors have questions and maybe want to know why so and such position is there.
Right.
And you'll need to defend that.
Sure. Happy to explain. The key is, and what people don't like to hear, and I say a lot, is it has very little to do with the external comparability. The salary survey is only a litmus test for what the market is. The most, as stated in here, the most important thing is the internal equity. And it's about, and I'm glad you mentioned the position. It's the position, not the person. So what we do to evaluate the positions in the report, you see on page, there's a nice chart.
Want to re-read it in?
Within the report, it shows you how we evaluate positions. So this table is showing you the supervision, the complexity, the accountability.
Oh, yeah, I remember reading that.
This is the, this is the crux of what we evaluate. So the way we evaluate a position is...
It's in the report, not in...
In the report, it's got, yeah. Everybody was given a comprehensive questionnaire, a six-page questionnaire.
Every employee?
Every employee, yep. And so what we, and we had two orientation sessions. So everybody who came in, came to an orientation session, we said, and it's very hard, we ask people how long it's been here and we say to the newer people, it's almost easier for them to fill out a questionnaire than it is for people with longevity. I never use older, I use longevity. So because as we're in a position longer, we really identify ourselves to the position. We don't view it as the position we happen to hold. We, you know, when I was the Personnel Director for the town of Watertown, I wouldn't say, oh, my name's Mary, I hold the position of Personnel Director. I say, I am the Personnel Director and I have made that job what it is and it is about me. And so if I have a master's degree, my job must require a master's degree. That's not true. So what we try to hammer home with people is, pretend you're writing the job description because you just won the lottery and you are leaving for a year-long cruise. You know, we want the job description is about if it were vacant. What happens when you have long-term employees, which is a blessing because you have all that institutional knowledge, is that they view the job as what it is today or what the requirements are today based on what they have, not what they would need to fill the job. So that's the hardest challenge for people. What is a job required? If it was posted tomorrow, what would it require? Now, often, people have grown the job and requirements have changed. So I'm not saying it can't be what the person has. One of the things that we challenge frequently is, people will say, well, I have a bachelor's degree, so is the job going to require a bachelor's degree? But when we ask the question, if somebody didn't have a bachelor's degree but they had six years of experience, could they do the job? If the answer is, oh, sure, then the job does not require a bachelor's degree. We write in the job description that it's preferred. So one of the things that we evaluate is what is the required education? So we go through the questionnaire, we evaluate all of these factors. How much supervision? Do you have a boss? Or are you an authority under elected board? If I'm the Assistant Town Accountant, I have the town accountant who's my boss. That's not as independent as being the health agent, you know? So that's one of the things. How closely are you supervised? These are the things that factor. How much accountability do you have? Are you the spokesperson for a function? A police chief is an easy example. That police chief represents all that is, all that is police. Your recreation director represents that department. There might be somebody who speaks for that person going over the rules, the regulations, the processes. They have to know a lot, but they don't have the same accountability. Things like judgment. And again, every single position in a municipality is important. So we have to be sure that we say that and acknowledge that. But some have more responsibility than others. If I'm the accounts payable clerk, I have to know the rules. But I'm doing pretty much the same process to everything I touch. If I'm the town, the city auditor, I'm using much more complexity and more judgment about how are we, are we analyzing data or are we processing data? You know, an administrative assistant to a public works department who's going to do payroll, invoices, work tickets, that's much more involved than the assessing assistant who's doing valuable work of a butter's lists and, you know, taking in excise and explaining excise. It's not, the scope is not as broad. So these are the things that we look at. Work environment. If I'm out on call 24 hours a day to do snow emergencies, that work environment is very different than a nice office in City Hall. So what we use is the industry standard of a rating system. It's weighted, it's point factor. You get 60 points if you need a master's, a bachelor's degree. You get 20 points if your job requires a high school degree. If you're the division or department head, you get 60 points for accountability. If you're an assistant, you get 30 points for accountability. So we evaluate the positions on this point factor system. It's called a rating scale. Now, the way that we do it, you'll be shocked to know, some people write better, use better words than others will... Are we on tape?
Yes.
Okay. Some will fluff up their, I won't use the word, the blank blank factor of, you know, I walk on water next to Jesus. You know, versus, some people overplay their level of responsibility, some people underplay it. They're not as articulate, let's say. So we don't just use the questionnaire. Every person was offered an, we did an individual half-hour interview with everybody who filled out a questionnaire. Now, in some of the positions, say you're a motor equipment operator who hold the same position, we did those as a group, you know? So we call it like four bites at the apple. Our goal is to get the job description right. We do a questionnaire, we do an individual interview, we do a draft. Those drafts were sent meticulously. They were reviewed. This, I acknowledge and admire the review process here. We did an initial review, we did a department head review and then an employee review of the job descriptions. So we get those signed off on. Those were all approved, everybody agreed, they were accurate. It's only then that we apply the rating system. So we come up with the point totals and the factors. It's, that's what we use to decide which positions are in the same grade. So you see in the report, the grades A through whatever they are. It's those points that determine the initial assessment on the grades. So if, if my job has, you know, 500 points and your job has 490, we're going to use that range of 450 points to 500. And that's going to be grade A. So first we do that. We say, what are the point ranges? Usually a 50-point range is what we look at. Then we look at, then we look at titles. Like say somebody who's in an administrative assistant or secretary or bookkeeper job and the points came up to be, I'm making these up, I don't have them in front of me, you know, 290 and one was 320. And we're like, yeah, but those really are more similar than different. While there's a science, there's a bit of an art to it, you know? And so we come up with the grades. Then, at that point, we look at the salary survey. And super, it's like a layer of GIS, a GIS map. We come up with our foundation of those grades. So you see those grades in the report, how we group the positions together. And then we say, here's this layer of salary. Now, the grades are much more scientific than the survey. The survey has nuances of, now, for example, a treasurer collector, although you have a finance situation here, so that's not always a good, an assessor, let's use the assessor. An assessor in one municipality is very similar to an assessor in another municipality. Many of your positions, oh, many of your positions...
Can I help you?
What's the meeting?
Nash Pond. That's okay, we go downstairs.
Just put a sign on the door if you want.
We're flexible, sure.
Thanks.
Thank you for being flexible. I love this.
I didn't know that. I would have asked Barbara to give us more time.
No, 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 we'll move downstairs. I'll put a sign on the door.
All right, thanks.
You should join us, it'll be more fun.
I'd rather talk about the pound. Anyway.
The, an administrative assistant, you know, what does that mean? What does a secretary mean? We find more difficulty in that. In recreation, if you have a program coordinator, that might be a different, that might be a department head in one town or city and an assistant in another. So the salary survey is really just to superimpose to those initial grades. Now, what we also see is if we see an outlier, we look at both the average and the median of the salaries. We try, when we do a salary survey, to say, health agent, great example here. Now, is the health agent the same as a health director? The way we wrote the job description is, yes, it is. You know, I think there's been some history in this city of, well, what does that mean? Is that person a department head? So we put on the salary survey, you'll see it, is the department head? Because in some municipalities, there's a director and then an agent who is the equivalent of an inspector. Your agent is not just an inspector. So sometimes you've got to know that. And what's good about, my colleague David did an awful lot of these job descriptions and collected the salary survey and I did some of the analysis. So he's in Malaysia right now, he says his best. You know, but on that health agent, we really have to have some dialogue with the administration over, is it a department head or not? Just because somebody's, we call them the sole practitioner departments, your arts council is that as well. You know, they're a sole practitioner. So sometimes they are viewed as less than or not important. If they're doing a budget, they're managing the whole program, you know, they're either a division or a department head. So we, they get points for that. And sometimes that's where people get thrown off when we come up with our grades. So those that have much broader experience, that are municipal-wide, those get more points because their scope is larger. That will be, you know, your finance, your HR. And your public works has broad responsibility and many more staff. So there's different factors that drive those numbers up. You know, your finance and your HR touch everybody. They are not outside in the elements. DPW touches a lot of the public, but not every department. But because of the nature and the size and the scope of their work, they end up in similar points. So those grades are the most important. When you look at the outline salary survey, it really, as we say in the report, it's a guideline and it's really to see how do they, how do they fall. So if you have a question over what grade should somebody be, don't look at the, we advise, don't look at the salary, look at the groupings. So if you say to yourself, you know, the health agent is, because they deal with disease, they should be as in, as in the same grade as the finance director. I would go through and say, well, no, because of this, this and this. So the key is to look at the groupings and not the pay. You could have an outlier in pay and I believe you now have some of the detail on some of the salary surveys. The mistake or the thing to avoid is to find one title and say, in North Hampton, that position makes that, so we should pay this. Or in, you know, Agawam, they pay this. The way we do the salary recommendations for the dollars is to look at everybody in that grade. So if you look at everybody in grade G, we take the average and the medians of the market and say, and we compare that to what are the ranges now? What is the market? What do we recommend? For example, we look at, you know, the G range and we say, okay, the minimum is here. A lot of your minimums were under the market, but your maximums weren't as bad or they were closer, which tells us that your minimum, you're starting people on the lower end. Now, most positions saw a shift in their pay range from $2,000 to $4,000. So it depends on how you implement an increase. You know, do you place them on the scale that causes them an increase? There's a way, you know, at some point, some will get more than another. You could, you could roll a COLA into the way that you implement this and say, we're going to guarantee everybody at least 2%. You know, roll your COLA into it so that it doesn't seem unfair. When you adopt a new system, some people will get different, different levels. So I think that's one way to look at it. One thing to remember is if people work, if they're 40 hours, they work 2,080 hours, a dollar raise is a $2,000 raise, a $2,080 raise. So when you see differences of, you know, $2, that's depending on whether you're 35, 37 or 40, a $2 an hour raise or ranging the top pay by $2 is a $4,000 increase to what you're willing to pay for that position. It's difficult because we look at the people who are holding the jobs and where they fall. And what we are looking at, I've got it easy. I'm not looking at people. You know, I'm saying, this is what we recommend for the range. And even though a salary range in the market might seem higher than what we've recommended, we've taken into account every position in that grade and the corresponding. Because in our analysis, the positions in the grade are equal in value and should be on the same pay range. Now, we've seen and we've recommended and I perfectly respect the beauty is we get to recommend and you all get to live with it or adjust it, that the issue of stipends are going to be held separate than our recommendation. In many places, when we do a study and there's stipends in a lot of positions, they roll those in because the hourly rate is not truly representative of what somebody makes, earns for their job. And there's different theories on that. We don't have a particularly strong opinion on it. We view stipends should be something that is separate from the core job. So if I'm, if I'm the custodian and I'm also the tree warden, I should get a stipend for tree warden, you know? If I'm the planning director and I get a stipend for being community development director, we would argue that you should just change the job description and maybe increase the pay, but not count that as separate. So I understand the issue of stipends. And there are some statutory stipends out there for many different positions. So I think the, the response to our recommendations to say, let's just go with the base pay and keep the stipends as they are, that's perfectly fine, knowing that that's additional compensation and that's a policy decision. The Collins Center doesn't care. So long as you approach things we recommend fairly and equitably. So to treat all stipends the same and really evaluate, is that part of the job or is it a separate function? That's really a policy decision. And as, you know, as we said, a dollar on a 40-hour a week is, you know, $2,080. There's all kinds of different stipends and many of them, and I know somebody mentioned what particular position, that position statutorily does have...
City clerk.
Sections that can, you know, adopt, whether it's license fees or, what do you call it, justice of the peace, you know, those kinds of things.
Fair struggle.
Yeah, exactly. So that's a policy decision. But our analysis was on the base job. Now, one thing we didn't do is ask other municipalities is what they gave us, including any stipends that their municipality may have, which might be why the numbers are a little off. We may have, you know, we may have had somebody include their stipend in their hourly rate. We may have, you know, we may have had somebody include their stipend in their hourly rate, which may be why some of the external is higher. That's something we could find out for you if it's a real big deal. But if you're gonna be doing this and keep the stipends harmless, I think you're in great shape with that, with that position. Because I know that one was a touchy one.
Alright, I have a couple of questions. I know my colleagues have tons of questions.
Absolutely.
So, what are the, you did a great job. And what it's telling me is, we paid for a scientific study. And, and, and my biggest question is, this isn't the first time Collins Center has done a pay plan study for a community. You've done a lot of these.
In my nine years, I've done about sixty of them.
Sixty?
Yeah.
Well, so, okay, so, in other words, the word expert is a fair...
I like to say, I'm not an expert in many things, but this is something I am expert.
So, that goes back to my thought of the independent expert study. And you've proven to me, there's a lot of data points that go into a study of a pay plan, not just, okay, how much is Agawam paying so and so. What I liked hearing from you is, and it just dawned on me, is that you went back to the employees, correct me if I'm wrong, and the job descriptions you rewrote, and you went to the mayor and you went to the employees and you said, is this accurate to what you do? And they signed off on it?
Yeah.
Did you shake your hand?
Drafts were, but department heads at least signed off. Did the employees get to sign off? I see, so the department heads, I apologize.
But you're telling me, Jane, that these job descriptions do accurately reflect what the employees do?
They...
The new ones.
The new ones will, right. They're not in our format, they don't have all of the sections that we include in ours.
Oh, in other words, their, their, oh, you said that. Their job description recommendations don't include a lot of other information you want in the job descriptions.
Right, yeah.
Okay. And that's a little more detail that you want East Hampton to have. Okay.
And I don't, I don't wanna put out job descriptions that aren't ready for public viewing, so that we have to go back and then the unions question, well, why are there so many? Why are you changing them again?
Because some of these are union-based job descriptions.
Correct.
You didn't just study the pay plan for pay plan employees.
No.
You studied the unions too.
Well, and DPW, just DPW.
Oh, just DPW.
And you're a DPW supervisor.
You didn't do the police at fire?
Police and fire, no.
No. Why is that? I'm just curious.
DPW asks to be included.
Oh.
Because of the job descriptions and just where we were with DPW in general, there's a lot of these certifications and requirements since the last...
Okay.
Some of the job descriptions for DPW were within the eighties, they haven't been updated.
Okay.
It's very competitive, those, I mean, all of them are, but DPW in general, these are just a standard.
You know, it just hit me, because I'm about to retire, you said the eighties, and I think that's like yesterday.
Yeah.
But it was forty years ago. Okay. Alright, I'm sad about it now. You just hurt me. Uh, what was my other question? Uh, the stipend thing, as I mentioned to Jane, one of the things that I'm glad we're not, I'm glad we're not changing that, because employees, like Barbara and City Clerk or other employees, are used to the way they're being paid now. And one of the things that was important to me is that we're not changing, they, they may get an increase, they're not getting a decrease, and they're not changing the way they're being paid. However, if there becomes a, an opening in a position, and as you always do, I'm sure, you review what that job description is, and maybe you've changed the way stipends are dealt with at that time. But I'm glad we're not doing that now, because that's a difficult thing for employees to accept, even though their money may not be different. I, I don't know, I just think it's a better way to do it, isn't it, Jane?
You can use, use my position as an example, because the mayor has appointed me to the retirement board, so I get a stipend as Val and Melissa do for retirement. But, the next HR director that comes in, the mayor may not want him or her to be on the board. She may, he or she may appoint another representative.
And that stipends allowed by statute?
Correct.
Okay. Just like the city clerk with the elections, that's allowed by statute?
But it's not, I don't feel that the retirement board should be in, in the HR director's job description, because it may not be there.
Could be anybody.
In the future. You know, Mayor LaChapelle or any mayor may, who'd save me at the end of the term, say, I think I'm gonna go a different route. And, so if it's in the job description, then you gotta go back and change the job description.
Okay. And that amount's fixed for all members who receive a stipend with the retirement board? Three thousand dollars, I think, isn't it?
I believe it is, yes. Because it went before the council.
I remember that. Yeah? That's all I have. Bill?
Uh, I, I got a lot of the information that, that I was curious on, um, you know, on the email that you sent out, and I, I appreciate it, you know, it, it's interesting to look at and, and, uh, you know, I, I think the Collins Center for, you know, the job that they did, I, I think it's a pretty thorough, uh, analysis and even more in depth from, from your explanation, I think, than...
Well, you can gloss over. My, I wanna follow up on, one of the things that was really positive, you know, and, and these are emotional studies for people, you know, we identify with our, in our value, in our, you know, one of the things that was, certainly, from an organizational point of view, attempting, and I know it has to be bargained, to fix the way that the public works positions had crazy twenty cents an hour for this kind of license. You know, through the years, they were just added to, and it really wasn't reflective of the true nature of those jobs. They require licenses, you know, and then the, the director couldn't assign people based on who was getting a stipend. And, you know, so we're trying to include those, because they really are requirements of the different levels of the job. And, and addressing that because, you know, and then you say to somebody, you talk about, you know, here's twenty cents, you know, um, and, but many of them were getting more than a few of those. So, to look at their hourly rate and really evaluate it is, well, it's a dollar more. But, even with those differentials, let's call them, they're significantly under the comparables. You know, so, I, I think it's important to fix that, and this is an opportunity to do that. And we'll give the department more flexibility in cross-training and using people.
So, we, we did fix a lot of these.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, there is some people that are gonna, that are gonna get some increase.
On the road to, you're right, because you still have to bargain everything.
Oh, that's in the, that's in the union.
Yeah, yeah.
But it gives us the documentation to evaluate and be able to say, okay, yes, there is a problem, or, no, we're good with this. And then be able to fix what we need to and hopefully start really leveling out with the, as she said, the extra costs.
Anything else, Bill?
Um, just for Jane, maybe, on, on this plan?
You mean the budget?
The budget one that you, you made up?
That's truly an estimate.
Okay.
Because it, you know, I was, it's been a hectic week and I've been trying to...
Yeah.
And I didn't realize she doesn't have an assistant. They just hired someone, I guess you're supposed to do.
Just turned it down.
How much were you paying?
Nice. Um, where, where did, um, did that estimate come from, this chart, you know, in, in a ballpark?
What I did was, I took where the ways are.
Yeah.
Then, I took where we would put them on the new pay grade.
Okay.
As of July one. Then, I did up a spreadsheet with the twelve months and for each person down. And I sat there and said, okay, this person has eight months at the old rate and then four months at the new rate, so I figured it that way.
Gotcha.
This person has, oh, she gets her step increase as of July second, so she's got basically twelve months at the new rate.
Right.
So...
And then the next year would be, the following would be a whole year, but there may be a different...
Correct.
I'm just realizing how complicated this is.
Right.
It depends on when the anniversary was.
Many municipalities go to July one for that reason.
And then I can't, I couldn't just tack on for year, the next year.
Correct, because then you don't know.
Two and a half percent, because I'd have to figure out, wait a minute, it's not the rate they gave you for the cost for this year, I, their rate is actually this, so I have to figure it out.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Sure. That's a lot more work, right? Because going by everybody's date, so, what, the way we quickly look at it is, for example, if somebody, um, you know, currently makes the thirty-five dollars and then, you know, you place them on the scale and it's instead of thirty-five to fifty, they're at, you know, thirty-six, ten, you know, we say, oh, that's seventy cents times fifty-two weeks times thirty-five hours. But that's only if it's July to July, and then you figure out, is next year a fifty-two point two week, you know, year, I think it is. Um, and that's different than your numbers, which is why when we do the salary surveys, you'll see that we use hourly, we use hourly. And, um, only because you wanna be clear, different municipalities, you've got some full-time is thirty-two hours, some is, you know, annual salaries mean nothing to us in terms of the evaluation. So, which can be a pain if you've got salaried employees, but it really is much more fair to back into it that way.
And even our salary plays are based on hourly rates.
Yes, because municipalities really fake it, and nobody's really salaried, but, you know, because we give people leave by hours and, you know, so it's, it's a great debate for another day.
And it actually, if this actually happens, the numbers are gonna change. That's why I really would've preferred not to distribute the chart, because I did it based...
This chart, the budget chart?
Mine, the, the...
Yeah, okay.
Because I did it based on months, whereas when it actually happens, we actually go down to the day and say, they get eighteen days in this month at this rate, and, so, it's not, that's why I say it's truly an estimate.
Yep. I, I get it, I, I...
I guess you're gonna have to tell all the employees, this is truly an estimate. Could go up, could go down.
Just let them come here.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Are you done?
Yep.
JP?
Well, thank you for your discussion. I guess, let me go to the job descriptions just briefly.
Sure.
What I, what I was hearing is that we have a set of job descriptions that you developed and worked with employees, and there's some question as to whether or not employee, everyone signed off on that job description as agreeing to what the job description is, both supervisor and employee.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that, is that correct?
I believe that they were finalized by the department head, and I don't know to the degree which each employee sat with their department head. So, that I, yeah.
Yeah.
And they, they were, um, and they were, yeah, various, it was up to the department head of, of where they went back and forth and...
Because the pile that's in my office has marked up copies that I need to input changes and...
Marked up by the department heads?
Correct. So, it could've been the department head, could've been the employee, I, I don't know. It was before me, this is one that I've inherited, so...
Oh.
But we did another round of edits from the department heads as well, so they've been, they've been edited a few times, so...
And then the department head saw them after that.
And, yeah, so what will have to happen now is, and I know you're probably talking about format, you put the department, that's almost a housekeeping thing, not really changing the duties.
The essential functions, those likely...
That's a good way of putting it. Formating them the way you want all the job descriptions to read to the public.
Right.
So, what will, what will change in the, what, what difference?
The job descriptions I had in Collins Center are pretty much focused on the essential duties.
Right.
Our job descriptions, East Hampton's job descriptions have, as she said, they have the title, they have the grade, they have, uh, what is the objective of the position, what is the supervision required, and what do, does this position give for supervision? What are the physical requirements, what, you know, there's just a lot more...
Well, all of our drafts have that, that as well. Yeah, yeah. So, if, if the city wants to customize them more, and I knew you use the grid across the top, right? Do you use a grid like, um, no, you don't, the title, who they report to?
Yep.
Okay, so, none of the job functions or duties are changing between one job description and the other, that's the...
There, like I said, there could be a couple minor ones left that'll come in from department heads since, you know...
You'll be shocked to know, some may not have looked at them and have come up with new comments.
Yes.
Some employees of department head.
Either or. Regardless of that, especially in the union ones, where you have a number of them, you know, those need to be bargained along with the pay anyway, so there's, theoretically, there could be a change at that point as well, you know, the duties.
I'm, I don't have any other job description questions. I think you've explained that well, thank you. It's good to hear that they're essentially all the same.
Yes.
Because I wasn't getting that sense at the last meeting.
The approach was the same to all of them. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. In terms of, of, of putting together a survey like this and the external analysis, the number of data points that you normally choose for communities?
We try to do as, as many as possible. What we start with is the DOR, Department of...
Of Revenue.
Yeah, Department of Revenue, Local Services. We evaluate, it's much more a regional issue than an equivalent issue. We could have the, but we look at, we use like an assessor's map, we use our compass, who's the abutting, who's the next round, maybe who's the third round? You know, if you get guessed the third round, you're really in a different county. But, you know, so we wanna look at, you know, what is the market? The market doesn't mean equal. We have this all the time with libraries. They wanna, they wanna compare themselves to a library who has the same materials, you know, the production and the checkout of the books and the, the movement of, of materials. We wanna know, who's gonna drive to this city and who are you losing people to? And how far will your people drive for a different job? It's the labor market.
You mean the employee?
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's the labor market. So, we look at the equalized value, we look at population, doesn't really matter that much, you know, um, you know, we always have a debate out in this area, do you include Amherst, you know? And, uh, it's like in, in Eastern Massachusetts, you're near Cambridge, let's use Cambridge and Brookline, you know, everybody wants to use them. But you can see in some of these data points that there's some higher salaries. Also, some of those with higher salaries have fewer employees, so that's another thing to look at. So, we send it out, we put in here who we got surveys back from, some didn't respond. As we say in there, it's a big challenge to get municipalities to answer. We have tried, you know, a few times. But if you have, um, back in the day, before you really could send out a spreadsheet and have people fill it out, so certainly when I was HR Director in Watertown, we were sending out paper things and people were, you know, now we can drop the data in from a spreadsheet, we tend to send it out to more. We only give you an average or a median if we have three data points for that title, because you can't have a, a median and an average, you know, with two. We try, some titles don't correspond the way that some, which is why we don't put all the weight in the market survey. Go ahead.
Can I interrupt just?
Yeah, anything you want.
How do, how were these communities selected among all the ones? Which ones, which ones were left out?
Uh, the ones that were left out, I'd have to look, let me take a peek and say, who did not respond? Um, if you asked me if there was one you were looking for, Ludlow, Holyoke, North Hampton, South Hadley, um...
Quite a few local.
Yeah, yeah, we, I thought we did pretty well. We did not include Chicopee.
I think you said in the report, nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, there were nine, there's nine.
Yeah. Agawam, Amherst, so we did include Amherst. People debate that. But, our thought is, you've had people come and go to Amherst in the past, so, you know, is it your...
You mean your employee that would market of who you're trying to recruit from?
And who is Amherst recruiting from? You know, we, uh, who are they tapping? You know, it's great to be a training round for people too. Um, so, Amherst is high, but again, you're close enough, people would leave here to go work there. So, that's your competition, if you look at it that way.
So, in this sense, I'm sorry JP to interrupt, this, this kind of data that you're giving is a way in which the mayor and the, and the personnel director can look at positions and how do we market our position properly to attract somebody to the job? And that's what this is helping with.
Stay competitive.
To stay competitive in the, in, out here. So, it's not that hard to get somebody to come and work at East Hampton.
Right, and we look at it by the position and the function, and your challenge is to say, how do you deal with the people sitting in the jobs now? Because we recommend a pay range, and we say that range is competitive, so your people...
You mean when you advertise it?
Right now, we've recommended pay ranges for these positions.
Right, right, right.
You know, yeah, now theoretically, you could have a policy that says, we wanna bring people in at the minimum. people in at the minimum, but by having an accurate market range, you're better off, you're not losing out to the other municipalities or, you know, you mentioned you lost somebody, a candidate that, you know, but there were so many things that are attractive about the jobs here. Now, some people wish they were forty hours, some people are glad to have, you know, more time off. Those things make differences and you talk to one employee, it's a benefit, you talk to another employee, it's a curse, you know. So, we do believe that the ranges we recommended are in line with the market. You're not the wealthiest community, so some of your ranges are a dollar or two under the market, but you're still, every one of the ranges, and we do this on purpose, make sure that your employees fall within that range. Even if they're at the maximum now, we made sure that they would have growth.
In terms of evaluating and comparing the communities, you mentioned, don't look at population.
Mm-hmm.
Don't look at budget for the community?
Well, there's a, it's not, unlike the point factor system on the grading, the survey is more of the art than the science. You wouldn't want one of those factors to determine, because if we only went, what's the population?
Sixteen thousand.
If we only went with sixteen thousand...
You have to have...
Exactly.
I get it.
If you only had the budget. Here's an example. If we look at, sometimes what we do is we do the average. Say it's for the, pick one that's easy and not, the assessor. And we say, wow, that's really way far off. And then we look at one, like in a wealthy community, oh, we find out they're also the finance director. If we take that one out, does it shift what the median is? So, there's that kind of looking at it as well. We don't only look at population. We look mostly at who is your labor pool coming from? We ask the question, who drives the furthest? Your employees don't live far away. That's very true in municipalities. People don't, and department heads will sometimes commute a longer way, so really, your labor pool is much tighter than you think.
You're talking about, just to be clear, the salary structure that you're presenting? This is not the grades?
Not the grades.
That's what you're referring to JP, right?
Grades are the most important thing.
Salary structure.
Right.
I'm just only asking questions about the particular data points here and the communities that we're using.
Right.
For example, some have budgets that are twice the size of East Hampton.
Right, but you're, but they also have, they also have twice the employees in that role. Here's a perfect example, in an assessing office in Northampton, they have two clerks to your one. That's double the budget with the same function. So, don't let the budget...
I'm not saying the budget within the...
No, you mean the budget.
Double the budget for the whole commu...
I realize that, but that's probably true in every department.
Well, Northampton is double our budget.
Right, look at the DPW budget.
Right.
You know, but their motor equipment operator makes the same as your motor equipment. So, that's what we look at.
Is it different with department heads in any way in terms of span of control?
It can be, yes, yes, absolutely. If your health director doesn't, which is also why, health director in another city, let's say, who has a large staff, would get points for supervision that yours doesn't, which is why yours is at the lower level. So, that grading already takes that into account, which is why, if we see that the health agent here is a little bit under the market, we don't overreact and raise that range, because we know it's a smaller scope in job. So, we do take that, you know, we do look at that. We know that if, that's why in some of yours, you'll see, if you do the math, you'll see, oh, they still didn't get up to the average or the median, they're still under. Well, that's because you're a smaller scope. You're not supervising a lot of people. You don't have very many large departments here.
Right.
You know, so that's where that comes into play. So, you're exactly right.
In terms of evaluating the communities, is there, in your opinion, an equal balance between those that have higher EQVs or higher populations?
Yeah, I mean...
Because it would seem that if the initial data input were to communities that pay more, you're going to see an average that says, let's pay more. If you choose communities that pay less, and there's also the number of communities that pay less versus those that pay more, what efforts were made to look at that and balance it in terms of...
Well, we look at all, I could certainly send along our table that we download and we say, these are the municipalities we want to use. And again, we look at it as, and I'm trying to think of, you know, what's the, do we do Southampton?
We did Southampton, you did Southampton.
Southampton, perfect example, not wealthy.
Absolutely, absolutely. I would look at those figures and say, boy, we have to pay more than Southampton.
But that's a good rule of thumb, too, and knowing that, because we just lose somebody to, was it Southampton?
Yes.
Yes.
But we got our assessor from Southampton.
We got our assessor from Southampton.
So, we're competitive there.
And, you know, if you rotate HR directors, you know, we can, you know, but again...
That's a good plan, every year.
We need some stability. But again, that's a good point. You know, having it be on point in what the market is, you know, in some things, you can't go by the market. Typically, we see that these days in HR, crazy competition for good HR people. IT, sometimes you see that, you know, but I'll certainly forward the table that we use. And what I do when we're analyzing this is, we put, you know, the fifteen towns or we, literally, I start from a physical map and I put dots on the abutting municipalities and I call up their DOR information, the equalized value. The average tax bill is usually a better indicator than size of budget or population. The per capita income, it depends, because if you have a small town, that per capita income could be way up. But if you look at the average tax bill, you get more at the wealth and things like that, and the ability to pay. Ironically, Chickopee, we just did a project for Chickopee. And the, you wouldn't have thought it, we did the same sort of analysis, was that for a hundred and ten positions. We did the same sort of analysis, came up with the grades, came up with the, okay, the administrative assistants, they had four levels of clerk, of course, they're all in civil service, you know, they had clerk, senior clerk, principal counselor, head clerk, you know, and then, so we broke that down to like two different titles. So, everybody who was a senior clerk became a secretary, whatever the titles were. Then we did the DPW, same sort of thing. They had, you know, if it was a two, say you're going to stipend for this, you know, so we consolidated all of the motor equipment operators, heavy equipment operators. So, then, we look at the salary survey and we find the DPW entry level, twelve dollars and fifteen cents an hour. Now, even the top step of that laborer is sixteen dollars. The administrative assistants, top step, twenty-seven dollars an hour. They were way above the market. That just shows you cultures are different within the municipalities, you know, so all of that comes into play when you're looking at these things.
A lot of science.
Because you wouldn't know that, you wouldn't know that by looking at the EQV of Chickopee, which is a poor, you know, not well-off municipality. So, and they kept losing people to the schools. You know, all of their laborers would go over to the schools. So, there's always that dichotomy, too. So, the key I go back to is the grading structure. So, what we say is, because you can easily say, no, that pay range is off. Look at those grades and say, does it make sense that those positions are in the same grade? That's what's more important. But I'm happy to send you all of the DOR.
That would be great.
Yeah.
In terms of Westfield?
Yeah.
There's some information that's missing in Westfield.
Well, there might be. We give you what they give us.
What they gave you. We have an expert in Westfield.
I know.
So, why are we missing information?
What did we miss with Westfield?
Well, we're missing Personnel Director, I think.
That's because there probably wasn't anybody there.
Well, they got rid of her. Where did she go?
But, Westfield also has an issue, did they have pay range yet for that position? Or is it a direct one pay? It's a contract, that's why they did, so they had a contract with that person.
Which goes to why the police chief isn't on here. We have contracts for a lot of employees, but we have a...
We only have two.
I just, I just got this report.
Yeah, no, this is great fun.
And I was looking online and at Westfield and I said, okay, good, let's see what I can find out about Westfield quick. And, not to mention names, but it said Jane Sakowitz in the budget proposal for FY 2019 and it gave the figure of the salary right there. It was eighty-one thousand to start, I believe. And there was a second figure that was a little bit higher for the second half of the fiscal year.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
Eighty-two and change, yeah, you were going to step, increase, but all that was there.
Yeah.
I was just curious why we, that information was so easily accessible on the internet and not plugged in.
Well, but when was that, was that just put up as their budget proposal?
That was put up as their FY 19 budget proposal, not FY 20.
I will tell you, in terms of the labor hours that we put in, if we had to go to every municipality's webpage to get salary data when they give us a spreadsheet, you know...
If you get the spreadsheet and they give you the information and plug it in, that's definitely, I was just curious since we had experts.
And if we have that, no, that is, yeah, very good point, very valid point.
That we didn't have more points, because some of them we don't have a lot of points.
That's why they have vacancies over there. That's why they have vacancies.
So, if I understood you correctly, the positions, the finance director and Personnel, you said, what did you say about those?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
When you were reading your notes.
You were saying contracts.
No, when you were reading your notes initially, when you began the meeting, you were reading...
There were some positions that had stipends.
Oh, there were stipends?
I was talking about the stipends.
So, no one's...
Retirement board, finance director, now Jane, and that's when I said that. The stipends, those were not changing.
Okay, all right.
Even though the Collins Center said that might be something we'd want to do. And as I put out, if we were to do that, I would rather do it when there was a vacancy. It's a lot easier than having to deal with the current employee and saying, hey, we want to change the way you're getting paid and center up. Because morale is part of this whole thing. You can't discount that. I don't know how much longer we guys want to go with this, but I'm satisfied with the science behind this. Again, I like the independent, and I have to say, Mayor, I was hesitant when I heard thirty thousand dollars. It's money well spent. I have to say that, because doing this in-house, you would never get the kind of labor involved in this from employees that have other duties to get this kind of work done. And without also criticism, because it was an in-house job, therefore, there was personalities involved, politicizing, independent surveys, whether it's this, whether it's taxes, when we have to assess everybody, those things protect our own employees from criticism, because we're using experts to come up with a pay plan that, from all I'm hearing, is more equitable. Now, we're not going to please everybody. We're going to have employees that say, wait a minute, so-and-so is getting paid more in Agawam. Well, Jane has to answer all those questions. That's why we pay her the big bucks.
I'd say, I'd say go to Agawam. This is the job we're offering and this is the salary we're offering.
You don't want to be flippant, but, you know, you don't want to be flippant, because it's so valuable to keep good employees, but sometimes there's just not that capacity. You have to say we don't want to hold you back.
We had an, not an argument, we had a discussion last time. I said, it's too bad we couldn't give merit increases beyond the end of the scale. In other words, they max out, why can't we give, and I used the finance director as an example and because she was there, and she made a good argument. And I'm not going to quote her directly, because I'll be mistaken, but simply put, if you take a job and you know what the range is and you max out, okay, that's what the job is. That's what the pay scale is. If you want to go to another community and maybe get more, well, your duties are going to change and everything else is going to change. But we, by giving merit increases, there's a lack of equity in that. I think that's what term she used, in how you would evaluate that. I don't know if you want to say anything to that, but I don't know how...
I mean, merit is...
Like my job, I always get, they call it a COLA, but it really isn't. It's not matching anything, but that's all we get, a merit, or they call it a merit, no, I'm wrong. They call it a merit increase, but it's not even a COLA when you look at it. They give you two percent or something, they call it a merit increase, okay? But they also have grades and I'm not near, I've been there forty years and I'm not near the top yet, so, I don't know how they do it, but anyway, the merit increases, I just think that was a good example of how municipalities have to be competitive, but they can't just go on forever and value their...
Right, and at some point, you know, the demand curve will kick in and if you gave merit, you know, say you have, let me use a silly example, a receptionist in a department who's outstanding and you keep giving merit every year, and then they're at sixty thousand dollars. Well, you know, it's the value of the job. I'm sure the finance director was getting at that, the way we recommend that you deal with it, and some jobs lead themselves more to being able to measure for merit. That's, it's not fair. Your assessing clerk, let's say, could do a fabulous job, but is that the same opportunity to do new initiatives as somebody in a planning department role? So, merit is very difficult in a municipality. We see it not working too well in most of, you know, there's all kinds of good intentions, a performance review bonus and all of that. We recommend more so, and again, you have a lot of bargaining obligations, you know. We like to say, do you have a longevity program? You know, and that's something to consider, you know.
There we do have that, it's not very well, it's not very high-funded, but it's there.
We do have, but you have...
That could be looked at.
Yeah, we would say, and again, this is the world according to merit now, you know, not necessarily, fairness and equity is important and morale feeds that. It's very, a classification, it's a system, it's a program, you know, and hopefully, people will see that at least, they may be saying, oh, we're all five dollars under the market. Well, at least it's all of you, you know, the, we're equal opportunity, you know, you're not the wealthiest municipality and you're not the least wealthy, you know, so you're well, these ranges keep you, get you to the market and pretty well in there.
And we give a good healthcare plan and those kinds of things.
Very important for us.
Very important to consider benefits and how they attract people.
These days, we also know...
The attraction of the four-day work.
Yeah.
Well, that's true.
That's huge in marketing and...
Okay, what are you paying the assistant? If I can commute two days from Shrewsbury, I'll be here, you know.
JP, you had another question? I'd like to try and wrap this up if it's all right, because, I don't know, Joe, do you have any?
Just a couple quick ones, but JP can go first.
In terms of the differences in the salaries as a result of all...
The budget thing she did.
In terms of the budget thing, what are the positions that rank the most differences?
That's not you, that's Jane. That would be, Jane, this, I think he's referring to this.
Dollar-wise.
I'm not sure what you mean, some...
You mean, what, which positions, which positions are going to be impacted most?
Which positions would be impacted the most dollar-wise?
I'm guessing DPW.
Well, the finance director is getting a larger increase, because two and a half percent of a larger salary is more money. Am I reading that right?
It's more, the people that are really going to be impacted are the, like, level GH, maybe half G and H.
The next to high end.
Right. The low and A as well, because some of them are going to get a pretty hefty jump to get up even the first level in the A.
So, I was looking at the positions. And which ones?
It's tough to tell from this spreadsheet, because you don't have the same amount of time period at the new rate, so...
Yeah, the anniversary date.
Right, so what would be better is to look at the current hourly rate and the recommended range. For example, let me walk you through an example. So, right now...
Want to take finance director?
Sure.
Personnel director?
Sure, currently...
DPW, they're, I would think would have the most impact.
Yeah. Let's do the finance director. So,... So, currently, the, let me find it, hourly pay, hourly pay, oh, the maximum, 'cause she's at the maximum, correct? Finance director?
She gets a step increase.
Yeah, give me somebody who's at the maximum.
Right now, everybody's got a step increase coming, right?
Right, but I'm talking about their current pay.
Current pay, versus, it's current pay plan.
Barbs at the, city clerks at the...
Okay, okay, so, perfect example, city clerk, duh-duh-duh-duh, currently, thirty-five, thirty. I think she might've gone up in January, right?
Correct.
Thirty-five, eighty-three, right? Okay, so she's at thirty-five, eighty-three. So, if you look at the recommended pay scale, she would go to thirty-six, seventy-four, which is a seventeen hundred dollar a year raise.
Just to get onto it.
Just to get onto the grid. So, that's a seventeen, and then...
That's not a step increase, that's just getting on the grid.
That's onto the grid, that's the annualized... So, she would go from...
We're on the back page here.
Should be on those.
She would go from thirty-five, eighty-three to thirty-six, seventy-four.
City clerk, thirty-five...
It says thirty-five, thirty, but there's been a step increase.
It says thirty-five, thirty up here.
Right. So, by the time we did, she's gotten a step increase.
Alright, good.
So, you, the way we approach it is the current pay, here's an example, thirty-five, eighty-three. Finding the step that would give her an increase is thirty-six, seventy-four. That multiplied by thirty-five, by fifty-two, thirty-five hours a week, times fifty-two is an annualized increase of seventeen hundred and seventeen dollars. So, that's almost a two thousand dollar raise to get on this scale. And you're maintaining the stipend, so, and there's another step.
Uh, she's getting, she would get her next step in January.
In January to be at thirty-seven, sixty-six.
So, she'd get another two and a half, approximately two and a half percent in January.
And a COLA if you grant one.
Prior to this, this is why I like this, prior to this, she was maxed out.
Right.
If we don't adopt this pay plan, she gets no increases unless there's a COLA.
Right.
That's the only thing...
And that's true for everybody.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Which is why I think this pay plan has to be looked at, in my view, at least it looks to me like we're really trying to be more equitable to our pay plan employees.
And...
And give them more of a range of salary. I like that, I mean, if you look at it, what they got now versus what they're gonna get...
Right, and then they're gonna get steps for the next...
However, it depends on where they are. So, if they were near the maximum, they're gonna be near the maximum here. But if they were under, they have plenty. I, I think in the brief overview of all these employees, only one landed at, you know, above the maximum. So, that means everybody within a year or so is getting at least a two and a half percent increase because they've all got a future, at least a future step. So, when you do the analysis of their current hourly rate and say, "Where are they falling?", only a few are at twelve, and that's clearly a raise over what they've got now because they're at maximum. Most are falling in, some are falling in one or two, which shows you how far under the market they were. But if you're, most of them are falling in the middle and they now have future growth. Every single pay scale you have now, and we do this on purpose, was expanded so that no pay range was cut, you know?
Right, in terms of the number, the percentage increases, if my calculations are correct, the increase for the personnel director is five and a half percent?
That's if you're comparing that annualized...
I was taking it off of this, off of this.
I'm not sure whether that's the increase for the hour or whether that's the, that...
But again, that gives, that gives me a step, so I have like seven months at one rate and five at the other.
Right, see, that's total cost, not...
That's, I was looking at total cost and what the city will be absorbing is a five and a half percent increase.
But that includes two and a half.
For the position.
My position was one of the positions that was found to be...
Undermarked.
Undermarked, sure. And, and the finance director...
And again, what I like about that...
Four point one percent.
Yeah, yeah.
What I like about the fact that this is independent is Jane has to defend these and she's getting a good increase, but she didn't do it! It wasn't her that said, "I'll give you an increase."
And if you look at where I follow on the new grid, I'm at step two. I'm not even anywhere near the top of the chart, I'm down at step two, yeah.
Which means, God forbid, if we had to market another personnel director, we've got a better range to advertise. I said, "God forbid," it's on record. It did take us a while to get to that. And obviously, we attract people from Westfield, so we're happy to hear.
Well, you know, your reputation is good.
JP, you're done, 'cause I wanna give Joe a chance here.
Let's give Joe a chance, I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Very quick, I was curious, 'cause I know when we were talking about comparing different communities, is our typical full-time thirty-five hours?
Um, we have thirty-two, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-seven and forty.
Oh, okay.
Crazy, and we have some of those as well, yeah.
And so, and most communities are, are four...
Out in this area, it's thirty-five.
Okay.
You have a lot of half-days on Fridays out this way.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And that also makes it difficult to compare because we have the four-day work.
That's why, that's why I did it.
Right. And then what do you recommend, or maybe it's done by different job descriptions, if your job, for instance, I'm just thinking of our city clerk who's also registered our voters and it's election night and she's working late, do you recommend comp time or what do you, what do we typically do in those situations?
Who are you asking? Me?
Everybody.
Part of the job!
Our department heads do magic comp time.
Part of the job, that's what the stipend's for.
Flex time.
And, um, prior to my arrival, with the new payroll system, flex time that the managers can earn is capped at ten hours.
Okay.
So, we can never go above ten hours. Comp time has to be approved by the mayor for every other employee.
What is the difference, I guess I didn't know the difference, comp time and full-time?
Comp time, you have to pay out in the end, flex time, you don't.
Okay, it's just more time off is flex time.
Is that true of non-union employees, comp time?
Yeah.
Is that because it's state statute or is it...
It's federal, it's the Fair Labor Standards Act. So, if you're in a, this is why we make reference to being truly salary versus truly hourly. We, we give people an hourly rate in municipalities who are truly salary. Your department heads are truly salary. Here's no, if you're truly salary, you work eighty hours, you make a thousand dollars a week, you would make a thousand if you worked twenty, or if you make, uh...
You get the job done no matter how long it takes, some weeks it's less?
We don't treat people that way. Uh, comp time is technically time and a half for somebody who's eligible for overtime. People misuse the term. "Oh, I'm gonna take comp time." Comp time means that you're entitled to overtime and you earn it at an hour and a half and the losses, you have to buy that out if they leave. Really what you're talking about with your department heads, and sometimes DPWs do this. I was up all weekend with an event, you know, "I'm gonna take comp time Monday and take the day off." Really, you're giving administrative or flex time for that. So, that's where changing the language a little bit is important because even the fact...
It costs money.
Yeah, even the fact that you cap, allow, attracting up the ten hours, that's a good way to do it because that's the equivalent of about a day and a half for somebody, you know? If, and I know cities went through this with the institution of the early voting, where they were all the time out there working, you know? And maybe you say, "You know what, this was extraordinary, you know, here's another day." But they're also paid more at a salary with the stipends for those reasons as well. And you have generous benefits, you don't have skimpy benefits either, leave and things like that, so...
I actually think they're the most attractive marketing thing we have.
Yeah, I want your health insurance. Okay, one day a week and I'll go again. So, you have to look at that as a whole and you also have to be practical. Are we being fair? You know, you'd be shocked to know some people keep track of the time off other people take.
Gee, really?
Yeah, yeah, I've heard that before, you know? So, it's about fairness and I, it's terrific if there's a system and a good system of HR and administration in place that's kinda saying, "We wanna be fair." We all can make different things, but our rules should be fair. And I think that's what people look to.
Okay.
Sometimes some communities look at the benefits and also have a benefit analysis in addition to the external pay analysis. I noticed we didn't do that, that's fine. In terms of just looking at healthcare, health, health insurance, can you make some statements about the other communities that are the comparison communities we're looking at?
Cities have absolutely better...
City form of government.
City form of government, yes, versus towns.
Northampton uses the GIC, nobody likes it. Sorry, I didn't say that.
We also pay seventy-five percent.
Yes, so not only do you have better, you know, you pay a better rate.
The plan itself.
The plan itself is better, and again, the size of the pool. In some cases, we get rate sheets from municipalities that's a relatively, their health insurance rate sheet, and they say, "How many people are enrolled in this plan and what's the, what's the pay and the copay and all?" In many places, it's not that different. What we tend to do in a place like you, we say, and that's an added bonus that you need to maybe consider of, you know, what are those benefits worth? To do, unions don't like, it's not helpful sometimes. It's good for the municipality to know, what are our benefits? Are you really gonna change them? Unless you're doing an insurance review, we find that most decisions are not made by that. It's good anecdotal evidence to have, you know?
I guess you'd say, if the health insurance plans are significantly different. Ours is preferable to the GIC. If all the other communities were to have GIC health insurance, and we know Northampton does, I don't know about the other eight.
Right, right.
What would you say about the salary structure?
If in fact that we see, as, no, as a rule, you would argue that their pay may be higher because they have lesser benefits. We've seen those trade-offs.
That's a good point.
You know, Northampton may pay more because they're in the GIC, we don't know. I recently did a survey for the town of Hudson, not far from Shrewsbury, you know? Pays very well, fifty-fifty split on their health insurance. So, that town administrator couldn't recruit people even at the higher pay. That's a, a significant difference. Now, you know, that's why health insurance is tricky. And as we move forward in our health insurance industry, maybe capture some of that information. But you're right, more and more municipalities are thinking, "Maybe we should get a Blue Cross plan mirroring the GIC or a tough plan outside of the GIC." So, it, it's tricky because you're not in full control.
I'm not suggesting that, that, that we go there, that we go there.
Yeah.
But I am wondering if it has a tempering effect on how much the salary, how much salary difference you'd look at and say, "Well, you know, maybe it's worth ten."
It does.
Ten percent of the increase that we're talking about.
Right.
Fifteen, I don't know what the percentage is, but it has, has to have an effect on it.
Yeah.
Joe, don't go anywhere.
The benefits affect the wages, I mean, the benefits are...
Right, right, that's a good point.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear that.
When the benefits are not great, you can sometimes see a compromise in the wages. But if the benefits are good, you don't necessarily see it. It's not an inverse relationship, dollar for dollar, that's for sure.
It doesn't have the recruitment impact. If the benefits are good, they look at, they're still looking at the wages because they can't argue the benefits. But if the benefits are bad, it's tough recruiting.
Alright, I, I wanna, Joe, did you finish your question? Okay, I'd like to move this forward, gentlemen, because I believe strongly that, and thank you, Mary, for coming, that helped me understand how this was achieved, how having independence. So, I'm just gonna make a motion that we accept the pay plan exhibits A and B and put it forward.
Do we know, before we...
Can I have a second?
If you have a second, I was gonna jump in and ask, so the, the total amount of difference between not accepting and accepting, if it's funded fully, is how much?
Seventy-seven thousand dollars next year.
In the first, seventy-seven thousand dollars in the first year.
But that's an estimate, it really is an estimate.
I, I understand.
Because a lot of those, I remember, we have a lot of part-timers that I had to basically look at their pay history and say, "Okay, it looks like an average of this many hours a week." So, they could go, they could get dropped in the new budget, they could get dropped to four hours a week, I, you know?
I'm sorry, I can't...
I said, "There'll be decreases in some places of hours that people work." I mean, so that amount, that jump in the budget, if fully funded, it's an estimate.
Is it the same amount in the subsequent year, or are we talking more or less?
Jay felt it would be almost the same.
It would be about the same because, you know, the increases will take place at the same month, the increase, you know, so...
Step increase.
Step increase, so, but it's, you know, it's about the same. And then it'll go up a little because you're getting two and a half, you know, it's two and a half percent of a higher number, so it'll go up a little bit, but...
Beyond the seventies.
Right.
Mary, in terms of ways that communities ameliorate the impact, how, can you speak to that as a subject?
Sure, one way you actually are doing that, I guess it might be a wash though, is that, you know, switching it to a July one date, that's a big bargaining issue though, you know, when you have step increases. So, the reality is, not everybody will get the two and a half percent step because some of them are near the max, so they may be at the max now. So, if you're saying it's seventy-five thousand this year, so you're already up at seventy-five for the next year, and it would be the two and a half percent step, but that's easy enough to project out when you have the decent numbers on a spreadsheet. So, you know, if it's seventy-five thousand, you know, this next year, that base will become your level service and then it's either, if you add a COLA and a two and a half percent step for those who are eligible. Looking at it and remembering it, I think that's probably not everybody, but because their rate will have gone up that much, I think the seventy-five for the next year as well. But you'll know the numbers, this is relatively, your finance director is so good that, you know, she can just do that spreadsheet and say, "Okay, step one," and you're so good at the spreadsheets, you know? They're at step eleven now, they'll be at step twelve next year.
So, are you saying seventy-five, seventy-five, let's say in the first year, and then up to a hundred and fifty total cumulative impact? In the second year, are we talking seventy-five again?
Seventy-five again.
So, a hundred and fifty over two years.
Right.
Okay.
Minus anybody who's already maxed, leaves, or, you know?
So, the second two and a half, two, two and a half percent increase doesn't...
You're most likely gonna...
You're gonna go down, but nobody's gonna leave because they're so happy.
And that's why I like it, it's the marketability, it's a recruitment tool, and it is more equitable. I put a motion on the floor, do we wanna do this? I really think we spent maybe three hours on this. I'm satisfied, Bill, how do you feel?
Yeah, I just, there's two things on here that weren't on the original, and so the amended list. Uh, there's a computer technician added to it, and there's a foreman for the cemetery that is a new position as well. So, I was just...
Both of those positions had always existed.
Okay.
We have them already, they're already there.
Are you saying they weren't in the list that we had originally?
So, the cemetery foreman was, but the computer technician was not. Not as only...
Under D, computer technician?
Correct.
Did we add that, Jane?
We've had computer technicians.
Yeah.
Was it not, was that a typo, wasn't on the, this is the one you just, referring to the one we just got?
Correct, the one we got at the last meeting that we just got.
The computer technician also, our IT departments are combined. So, school and city IT, we had Grant a few, four years ago, and they're combined. So, there's a computer technician that maybe was classified under school, but now is your technician for the city? We have a computer technician in part-time in the past for city.
Well, what he's referring to is it wasn't on the original one.
I would have to claim this, whatever.
An error, clerical error? Okay, it's not a new position in other words, Bill, if that's what you were worried about.
I know Barry had part-time or working with him for many years.
So, the positions there may not be filled right now.
It, it is filled, it's filled, Justin's in it, but it's, it's now full-time combined with schools.
Okay, it was part-time and now because it's combined with schools, it's full-time, that's better for you.
Is that the same with cemetery foreman?
Cemetery foreman has always, we've always had a cemetery foreman.
So, we didn't put that in the information?
Oh, I know, you're looking at the survey.
I'm looking at everything.
Okay, so what may have happened is if municipalities... Okay, so what may have happened is if municipalities did not respond with salary data, they're not showing up on your survey.
Right, so we didn't respond to our own survey?
Then we didn't have the data for it.
But there were also some positions, some titles, remember, we had talked about this when we, when I first came down. The, um, you initially had to do away with this position, make it, or, you know, just classify it as this. We went, after speaking with the mayor, we went back to all of our original titles that the city council had established over time, and we put, because we wanted to leave them there, because what if in the future, we wanted to bring that position?
Oh, I see.
So they're all back on. So if you are looking at comparing Mary's original list to what is on A or B, it's gonna have more, because it's got the entire list of what city titles exist and have existed over time.
Does that make sense?
Where Mary, where Mary and Colin said, "We're trying to condense it."
Okay.
And eliminate some, but these campaigns policy is, we just keep the titles, we may not use them.
So that position's there, just nobody's in it, there's no information, because it doesn't exist at this current point. But if we wanted to, we're adding the budget to have a forecast for the cemeteries, we could.
We have, we have probably more than one unfilled position, existing. Position exists, okay.
Gotcha. I see.
Any further discussion?
Just a quick question on finance director position and the number of data points collected. Four of nine communities are listed here, it seems.
A lot of communities do not have financial.
Oh, because they have treasurers or collectors, JP, we combined it.
Well, I, I'm, yeah.
Somehow CFOs, somehow, but they, a lot of them don't.
Right, so let's see, let's look at that. Uh, yeah, Ludlow certainly wouldn't, um.
Holyoke.
Trying to think, I know, no, no, they don't, Holyoke doesn't.
And Westfield doesn't?
Westfield doesn't.
No, no, Wilbraham, no. No, that's right, Agul.
Only four communities have finance directors. But that's, that makes sense, because we're, we decided to combine three positions of the one, because it was efficient, and a lot of communities do it.
And some of these places still have, you know.
Treasurer, a collector, you know? And, that's an example, we waited till DeeDee retired before we made that change. We didn't want to make that change and bump somebody out of a job.
And back to your last question. City treasurer and city collector. Still exist in the job title.
As a title.
So we could go backwards.
In case in the future, you decide, you know, we want.
We want separate positions.
Correct.
Melissa's job would just be treasurer, and then we'd have a collector.
And sometimes the way, you know, and of course, we didn't do, um, town accountant, or, well, you have the auditor, but sometimes that role is a finance director.
I was just gonna ask you about the, about the city auditor data points here, because it looks like, how many data points? One, two, three?
Probably not many.
Four data points for city auditor also.
Right.
But city auditor, town accountant, don't they kind of pretty much have similar functions?
It depends, if your auditor worked for the council, if your, is your auditor the controller? You know, it, it's one of those funky things, you know? When I was in Watertown, our auditor was the town accountant, but was hired by the city council, not the town manager, the, the town council, not the town manager. Sometimes you have town accountants be finance director. It all depends on the structure of the government, which is why some of those are tricky. So four out of nine isn't bad, because you've got enough cities around here, that's a comparable title.
Okay, just want to be sure we were able to defend those positions.
Absolutely.
The finance director, the Personnel Director.
And the way that you defend it is you say, "But go back to the grade structure," that's what's most important. And of course, all employees want to do is find their salary and plot it out in the end. And again, that's because we're human.
Human nature, sure.
I would want to do that myself.
I don't have any other questions.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm in favor of the classification plan. I didn't go over.
I did both, I did both.
In terms of, in terms of the implementation of the financing schedule.
That's, that's not part of this discussion, that would be.
That's something in.
Part of the, it has to be supplemental appropriation later on. The mayor, the mayor has the option, as Mike Taznick did, of not en, not granting stuff.
I think that puts the mayor in a, in a difficult position, but.
Well, it, it, their current policy is to grant them.
The, yeah, I mean, the, the, not the mayor's. I was gonna say, the mayor's.
It's the mayor's position, not the person in the.
It's the mayor's, like, it's the mayor's. Um, that's one of the reasons why I came months back and did the COLA, um, and for, especially for pay plan. So they got the COLA, it's what they expected as we went through this process, and then reevaluate the money. And, and, you know, candidly, the year coming at us is much tighter for good reasons than, than we expected, so we'll have to reevaluate. But I wanted to make sure we got the COLAs in, everyone was expecting that. We told everybody, you know, this is the process we went through, like, the, the COLAs that they expect, usually expect in January, will we afford it? I, I asked for it, to make sure people got that, and then we were to figure out financially how we will, what's.
But currently, you hope to implement.
Yes. So, I mean, if nothing changed, still there's a guarantee of COLA or staff, I mean, we just might have the money.
In an ideal world, I would much rather look at your revenue projections and have a good sense of that meeting before voting on this, but.
I, I think.
That would be my, in a perfect world, that would be my.
You have another vote, too. If the supplemental appropriation comes in and you don't like it, you'll have a lot of employees.
Right now, I am in favor.
Okay, three, zero, it's approved. And we're gonna bring it forward at the next meeting.
You'll send that information.
I will, yes, I made a note, yeah.
The other thing, before we break up, there was a question of dispatch and the hours that we were gonna talk about at this meeting. Remember, there was lunchtime and no lunchtime, and.
Whether it was just dispatch or not dispatch.
Dispatch is the only.
It was a recommendation.
Department that gets paid for their lunch, because they usually work alone and cannot walk away.
It's a public safety issue.
Right, and.
DPW, I have since found out, they work seven to three with an hour lunch, so they do get paid for their lunch.
When you're talking about DPW, you're talking about. The union supervisor.
And the DPW union.
And the DPW union.
That was negotiated, though. That's a negotiate. Dispatch, they're not union.
But in dispatch, I don't have any, any issue with, that makes, that makes sense. You're there, you're answering the phone, nobody else is there to answer the phone.
Right, and there's probably an exemption someplace for public safety, you know, that sort of thing. So my colleague, David, who sends his wishes from Malaysia, mentioned that, because he did all of the DPW ones, and that, that kind of became, became clear. So that's food for thought for bargaining.
Well, dispatch is not union.
No, I don't mean the DPW ones. It's food for thought, looking at it, how does it work operationally, what makes sense? And it goes back to that fairness, justice issues with your town hall employees, you know? So that's what, different, different unions, different situations, there's bargaining obligations, you know? Not everything can be exactly equal, you know? Not everything is fair, and not everything is equal, you know? But, um, so that's where that came.
Because it's back to how, how Dan started, where this is done by the position that the person.
And it, it's gonna, you're gonna have employees that don't agree, and they'd like to see a different salary structure. But the science of this is obvious to me. And I know individually, you probably get an employee, Jane, that comes in and asks you questions about how it is. But you, you ought to just take Mary and just play it. Because she really helped me understand it, I thought.
But you listen.
Oh, wait, we're still on tape. Uh, move to adjourn? Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.